Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, October 3rd. All selectmen are present with the exception of Mr. Kalenda. I will be chairing the meeting in his absence. First item, before we get to our scheduled appointments, I want to recognize Chief Morrow. Chief Morrow, please.
Good evening. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity. I know we're here tonight in the beginning, kind of out of order. But I'd like to formally recognize Lieutenant Neil Aspezi. He has just returned from a deployment with a team that he's belonged to since 2005. It's called the Urban Search and Rescue Mass Task Force One. Let me explain a little bit. As you're well aware, Lieutenant Aspezi is the Fire Prevention Officer for the department. And he's also the Director of Operations for the Emergency Management. So as you know, he keeps an eye to the sky whenever there's impending weather and storms and things that come along, and keeps us informed, and potentially gets everything squared away with the Emergency Operations Center in case we have to have an activation. So he works very hard for the town in that capacity. The team that he works for is under the umbrella of FEMA. And basically what it is, is it's a team of individuals, and there's 28 teams that are around the country nationally, and this team is one, the only one in New England. It's made up of fire personnel, police, EMS, and civilians, and there's approximately 150 members of this team. The purpose of the teams are to implement search and rescue procedures, provide emergency medical care, and help mitigate the effects of disasters such as we've seen with Harvey, Irma, and Maria. Lieutenant Aspezi was activated for Irma down in San Juan, Puerto Rico. He was down there for a little over a week, and they were getting ready to come home and demobilize when the federal government kept his team down there when Maria came through. So as I said, he spends countless hours training and preparing for this type of event. In 2005, the board entered in an MOU for Lieutenant Aspezi to take part and be on this team. At the time, he was assigned as a transportation and logistics specialist for the team. And in my recollection over the years, he's been put on standby several times. I think you had a couple of very short-term deployments, and this has been really the most significant and most long-term deployment that he's had with the team. If he wants to get up and speak, I will have him address a couple of words as to exactly what his roles and responsibilities were down there and how he was able to help the people down in Puerto Rico. So Neil, if you want to come up and just say a couple of words and...
Thank you, but, you know, not necessary. So, yeah, like the chief said, I've been on the Mass Task Force since 2005. I worked my way up. I'm currently a logistics manager, but we rotate. So for this deployment, I wasn't a manager, which actually worked out in my favor because I got to go out in the field a lot more than sit in the office. So, big change for me, and it was, it was kind of a blessing because, you know, you don't try to, you know, wish any of these on people, but when you have the opportunity to do what you trained for and help, you thrive on it and you really try to get out there. So, I mean, basically, I'll just give you a quick synopsis of what our opportunities were. Like I said, we went in this new thing called a mission-ready package, which was just specifically logistics to help out Virginia Two. And we were supposed to go to St. Thomas to set up a tent city for Operation St. Thomas and St. John's. That got pulled back, so we were in San Juan the whole time. There was a lot of logistical aspects. We worked 18 to 20-hour days for the most part. Like the chief said, we, San Juan and Puerto Rico didn't get too much damage from Irma. It was mostly the two islands, which were pretty well devastated. We, like the chief said, we got demobbed. A lot of teams got out and got flights. Getting flights out was tough, so ours was two days out. And at the one-day mark, they said, "Well, we have this other hurricane coming, and Puerto Rico kind of wants us to keep some feet on the ground." So, the New York team went home, Virginia One stayed, Virginia Two came back, we stayed, and some other cadre of personnel. With that, at the time, Maria was only a Category Two storm, so... And then, we woke up the next day, and there was a five. So, to say that I was elated would be an understatement, because I enjoy these things. And so I was like, "Yes." I was kind of disappointed when I dropped to a four, but we'll just let that go. So anyways, we stayed for that. We prepped for it. We got out in the field, did a lot of stuff, a lot of transportation, a lot of logistics, a lot of moving equipment, a lot of time on the airfield, a lot of time outside. Very hot, very humid, but we got acclimated to it. Lot of public relations, a lot of going out and checking on well-being, checks and such while the rescue teams went out and did rescues. We spent the night in the hotel for the Hurricane Maria. The Eye passed just about 20 miles east of us, which, or excuse me, west of us, so we got the Eastern Eye, which is the worst place to be. In a 16-story hotel, people on the, I was on the eighth. You could kind of feel, if anybody was 10 above, you could feel the building waving quite a bit. The structural engineers that they have on the teams were going around checking the buildings. We were supposed to evacuate to the safe rooms at seven, but just about five, they upped that because the building actually started to pulsate up and down, which was kind of interesting because of the updraft of the storm. So, we went down into that. We rode it through. Obviously, we were in the city, so we didn't feel the full wrath of the storm because there was a lot of protection. But we did get to go down outside and to the carport and kind of witness it and whatnot. And then, after that, it was full bore, go, 20-hour days. The hotel completely flooded out, so among doing other things, we ripped all the carpet out of 16 floors worth of hotels and rooms, just so we could avoid the mold because we had to stay there. We did, we managed a fleet of 150 vehicles that had been rented. Some had air conditioning, some didn't. So, we did a lot, and finally, we were, at 19 days, we were demobbed for good, and we were ready to go home at that point. We weren't ready to, ready to stay. But, the teams, you know, I can't say enough about the teams that we do. The news will portray certain things, you know, there's boots on the ground, there's commodities there, but just moving stuff is very difficult. It, getting to the outer areas, the roads are blocked. The rescue teams all had to be moved by helicopter. There was no way that they could move by road outside of the, you know, San Juan proper. So, the, but every interaction that our teams had, that I know of, and I had, it was, you know, nothing but thanks from the people. They're very resilient. A lot of them are that old-school community, so they were just taking care of themselves. They'd just give me some water, give me a little bit of food, and then we'd just start rebuilding. So, so it's a long road for them. Their infrastructure was questionable prior to this, and their economy obviously was not in the best shape, but, you know, hopefully, this will give them the opportunity to, to come back and be a great, you know, territory of the U.S. again, and, you know, tourism and whatnot. So, that was my, my size-up of it. You know, it was exciting. I don't want to, you know, go into too deep deal, but, you know, if there's any questions or whatever. But before that, I, I should end with, you know, thanking the chief and Chief Morrow Prior, who was the chief when I was allowed to join this team. It's a lot of volunteer hours. We don't get paid for training or service time or anything like that. We only get paid for deployments. So, having not gone on to many deployments, your time adds up for freebies, but actually makes the team that much better because everybody's there for, for the team. You know, obviously, the Board of Selectmen at the time had to sign the MOU to agree to it as well, so I thank the board currently and in the past. And it really is a benefit to the town, and that's how I kind of sold it in the beginning. A lot of the ideas that I come back with for equipment or, you know, ideas for operations, a lot of that comes from either the task force itself or the people that I work with at the task force. A lot of that stuff comes back. Even like the command trail that we have is mirrored off of the command vehicle that they have up there. So, it's really a benefit to the town, it's a benefit to me, it's a benefit to the fire department, and I appreciate the opportunity and the opportunity to go on this deployment for five longer days than is allowed under the system. So, I don't know if you guys have anything for me or if anybody...
So, I will just note, I think that the, you know, the eight to 10 minutes that you've spent summarizing though, that 19-day period, I think greatly is understates of the work and the importance that you and that group did. And one thing that I have to present to you tonight is a proclamation on behalf of our board. In recognition of your loyal and unselfish public service dedicated to those in dire circumstances, we wish to convey the gratitude of the people of Southborough to Neil Aspezi. The Board of Selectmen wish to hereby recognize you for your hard work, commitment to providing the highest level of relief efforts, and your professionalism in assisting your fellow Americans in their hour of need following Hurricane Irma and Maria during your recent deployment to St. John's and Puerto Rico. The town of Southborough is indeed proud to be able to assist our fellow patriots through your actions while serving as a logistics team manager on the Massachusetts Task Force One Urban Search and Rescue Team, which is part of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's National Urban Search and Rescue Response System. Thus, we extend the community's appreciation for your willingness to serve in times of devastation and distress, helping those whose lives have been left in tatters by these historic storms. The Board of Selectmen, October 3rd, 2017. There's also one, Lisa, I don't know if you want to...
Sure.
...read that one?
This is from the Massachusetts House of Representatives, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Lieutenant Neil Aspezi in recognition of your outstanding assistance with the hurricane relief efforts in Puerto Rico and your tireless dedication to protecting public safety, exemplifying the highest standards of the profession. The entire membership extends its very best interest and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all the endeavors. It's dated October 3rd, 2017, signed by the Speaker of the House and State Rep Carolyn Dikembe. Congratulations, welcome home.
Well, thank you, everybody. Again, these are, you know, not necessary. I'm not one for individualism, but I appreciate that the task force was recognized as well, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Well done.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, board members. Thank you.
We'll proceed with our first scheduled appointment. Continued discussion of the notice of intent to sell for 135 Deerfoot Road parcel. This topic was discussed at our last meeting. There were a number of boards and committees that gave opinions to us. Through that discussions, there were questions that arose as to some of the different ways that may be in place to finance this if the town were to choose to follow through on, acting on the right of first refusal. Mr. Ballantyne has put a brief presentation together. Mr. Ballantyne?
Can I give this a minute to...
Sure.
...come on up here? I will say that the presentation itself, we've got a few aerial photos on here, and just a couple of slides showing some of the financial balances and some of the financial status of the CPC or CPA funds. So, I'll run through this. This is pretty quick. It's a quick presentation once it comes up. And then, the discussion may be moot depending on the, the board's intent, whether to move forward with a, or the CPA committee's, committee's intent, whether to move forward in purchasing the, this particular land or not. That's obviously not my, my purview. That's the board's and all the other relevant people. So, once we can get this up and going, we'll be good.
We are efforting that as we speak.
Okay, now we're good. So this is the first aerial photo. It's kind of the naked photo of it that shows the two parcels. This is the one I like, just, just because it's a, it's the, you know, the basic photo from above. I think we're all familiar with the parcels, but if anyone wants to go back to these, or there's only like four or five of them, just let me know. This is a summary of the CPC appropriations, excuse me, for, of FY18, just as a reminder of what was authorized out of these funds. So, as you can see, there was a total of about half a million that, of various projects that were authorized out of the, out of the CPC funds for FY18. Just a quick, just a quick reminder, even though we, most of us saw this at town meeting. This is more important, the balance is after the appropriations. As you can see, the, the, there's some, there's some money or undesignated money. There's various words for it, but unreserved, undesignated, budgeted reserve of well over half a million dollars that could be allocated. Obviously, on a project this size, any, would probably issue a note for it, debt. Just as a quick reminder, you can issue a note for general fund money for, which is just a general note, or we could issue a money, a note like we did for Chestnut Hill under the CPA funding, and the CPA funding would then amortize that over probably 20 years and pay that back. So this is a quick schedule showing just an estimate because we do, remember, we have the Main Street, the 84 Main Street project that just hasn't been amortized officially yet, but it'll look something close to what's seen up there. And the, the 1.9 million is just a, an estimate of what possibly could be on the books if we went forward with this purchase of this property. So the combined total would be somewhere around 250,000, maybe a little more to start, and then decreasing. The, I didn't do that on purpose. The 258-4 at the top and the 258-3 is only $100 difference. I actually, that just came out that way, interestingly enough. These are rough estimates, I'm sure, you know, we could, they're actually to the conservative side, I think. You know, the revenue for the CPA goes up, usually goes up every year because it is based on a 1% surcharge on tax bills. So I didn't take that into account. The state money is sort of a, a funding source that's out there that's sort of a little bit of unknown. It has been trending down quite a bit, actually. So I, I, you know, I put the state match that we had gotten in for FY17, probably will be less for FY18, and could potentially be less for the, you know, going out, depending on what the state does with that. But however, it does appear that the CPA annual revenue could support a, it's, it's pretty clear, it could support a loan authorization for this property if the town decided to go forward with it. This is another map view. It's just, it's not a, you know, a photo. This is a true map showing the two parcels, just in a little different format. And I think we have another, another one showing the wetlands buffers there. I know there's some, some issues with some of the, at least pieces of the land being a little bit wet in the back there. One other photo showing the gradients. I'm not sure how useful this is. And the last photo, I believe, is, is also similar in nature. We just took a bunch of them, thinking that any one of these might be useful. So, that pretty much concludes what I wanted to say. I mean, the point is, is I would recommend, if we do go forward, obviously, we go forward with, you know, non-general fund source of funding, which would be, would have to probably be CPC funding. And like I said, that's, that's a decision that you'll have to discuss now and move forward with as a group, but, but there, I just wanted to make the point that CPC could probably afford this loan if, if that's what the town would like to do, to move forward with. And I'll just leave this up, actually, I'll probably leave the second one up, just to initiate the discussion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
I have a question. Are there any easements that are jointly owned by other parties other than the, I know the town has. I believe it's here, somewhere in there. Is there another easement on this property? On the west side, are there any easements or...
The property owner is saying no, just so, for those who can't see. Okay.
Is the west end of this industrial?
No, it doesn't, it's residential.
You don't, could I have you go to a microphone? I'm sorry, Mr. Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Dow.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what was the question?
Is the west end of this property, is there a line there for industrial?
No, it isn't.
There is no line?
No.
Up there.
There are, there are no easements except for the easement on the corner that you pointed out.
On the...
That's correct.
On the east.
Yeah.
Is that a town easement with the town?
It's what?
Is that easement with the town or with multiple property owners?
Easements with the town.
Okay.
And, and it borders the private road going up the hill.
All right, but not with other private parties, correct? Okay. Thank you.
No questions?
Yeah, no.
So, at our last meeting, we had heard from some town boards and committees, I guess, if there are any town boards and committees that are present that would like to offer new information beyond what was presented at our meeting two weeks ago? Ms. Gillespie?
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie. I'm Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission and the Community Preservation Committee. And both have met on the 23rd. The Open Space Commission met, and we again reviewed the property for its value as a priority open space parcel. And again, we agreed that it was. We had more detailed discussion, given some of the constraints with funding and other things, and we also agreed that we would support a proposal to have multiple uses under the CPA Act to help fund it because, as you went through it before, you might have noted that there's zero money in the open space CPA bucket for, doesn't mean you can't do open space, it just means it is harder to fund. There's other uses that could be done there, and we, our recommendation, which I think I sent you a memo, is to, that we would ask the selectmen to continue on in your investigations. Saying that, we had some feedback, and one of the points we just wanted to be clear on, this is not anything anti-development or anti-the-property owners. We think it's a beautiful property. However, the town has had this property in Chapter 61, which many people don't realize. Basically, everyone in town pays for that because there's reduced taxes on the property in exchange for the right of first refusal. So it's sort of like now, this is what we sort of paid for all these years, and we're just asking that everyone look into it. Do your due diligence, find out what could be done there. Additionally, it's not against the person trying to purchase the land or a developer because they went into the PNS knowing full well that it was Chapter 61 land, town had right of first refusal, and there's implications to that. So we just wanted to be clear, this is not against anything, it's just, this is the opportunity why we put land in 61, because the town has determined it meets certain requirements for value as keeping the land open. And now it's time to look into that. So, then we went into, on Thursday night, I think that was the 26th, the Community Preservation Committee met. And we went through our budgets, and we had been given the schedule that was up here from Brian, the town treasurer. I looked at it a little more closely, and I think the available funds are a little more robust than what was put up there as far as what we could afford, particularly how we would potentially be able to fund different types of projects there. So we felt it was certainly a fundable project to move forward with, and again, we are recommending that the selectmen choose to do further investigation. And to enable that, we took a vote, because we want to help facilitate, we believe you need to have more information because we don't know. You know, if we're saying, can't be all open space, there's a historic, beautiful home and barn there, we'd like to see that preserved, there's potential for some housing. And I wanted to also clear up something I said last, last meeting discussion on this. I had suggested that community housing can be created for veterans, and I am aware of organizations that are in need. We have veterans that come back handicapped, access needing, they come back to their families, they need wheelchair-accessible buildings. This is not in any way ever suggesting we build a homeless veteran's shelter on that property. Not that that's something you, if the selectmen want to look into, but that was never an intention of talking about housing for veterans. There's a need for community housing for our veterans, and that was what I was referencing. So, having said that, we believe, before the selectmen can really make a decision whether to move forward on the right of first refusal, they really need to know how we could, what we would plan to use this for. We, the CPC specifically said the neighbors need to be involved. We, the CPC specifically said the neighbors need to be involved in having input into anything that was proposed there. I personally don't think, without the neighbors, you're not going to get a project that's going to pass town meeting by three quarters. It's a very high bar. But before you pass on considering more about this exercising your right of first refusal, we think you need more information, and to help do that, the CPC voted to spend up to eight thousand dollars for the selectmen to hire a land use expert to create a plan, so we would know what we could be voting on versus the uncertainty of not knowing, what we could put forth for town meeting, instead of just saying yes without knowing or no without knowing. Additionally, we discussed the fact that, this was at the Open Space Commission meeting, sorry I'm going back a bit, but we also discussed the fact that many people believe that the terms in the PNS, which are for six single-family lots to perk, and one of those being the historic home, that we believe, not anti-development, but believe, and believe in property owners' rights, and once somebody owns that land, they can develop it within the full authority of what the law and zoning code allows. Having said that, we're also aware that the town has no forty-B protection, so that a hundred and eighty units of forty-B is available in the town somewhere, anywhere, not saying that's the, the current proposal, but if in fact it is only slated for six lots, with historically saving, I mean, with saving the historic home, then, you know, we thought it would be historic preservation, and with six lots, you'd certainly have a lot of open space available that wouldn't be developed, that that would be a good choice for that property, where the town wasn't paying anything, and that the selectmen may wish to have town council investigate whether the, if that's the property owner's intent, which we, we're hearing it is, to enter into a legally binding agreement that the town would give up our right of first refusal in exchange for that legally binding, six lots, historic home and barn saved. So that was something we wanted to ask the selectmen to consider. In addition, the eight thousand dollars, if you decide tonight not to move forward, you know, of course, we're, we're not going to look at the land use, this is under the selectmen's purview, but it doesn't mean if you use the money that we're asking you tonight to say you're going to bring it to town meeting. This is a tool to help you make that decision, and we know it has to be done quickly.
Thank you. Any other comments that boards or committees want to make?
Hi, Michael Weisler, a member of the Historical Commission. We have not had a chance to meet on this, but we've been following this issue closely. And the property, of course, is listed as one of our historic buildings on the Historic Buildings Survey. And of course, if it were to be demolished, it would default to the demolition delay bylaw and to the Historical Commission. We certainly hope that's not the case. This is a rather extraordinary structure on a rather extraordinary parcel. Let me just give you one paragraph of its history. The property, commonly called Cedar Acres, for the large grove of pines located there, has been a family farm since the early eighteen hundreds, perhaps even the late seventeen hundreds, though its first recorded date is eighteen thirty-one. Three generations of Fays, one of Southborough's founding families, farmed the property throughout the eighteen hundreds. In the nineteen twenties, the property was bought by Elgin John Rowe, an advertiser, as a gentleman's farm. It is Rowe who updated the facade of the house in the colonial revival style so popular in that era. Of the many original farm buildings, only the extraordinary nineteenth-century wooden gable front barn remains a remarkable survivor of our agricultural past. So I think I speak for the commission that we absolutely support any solution that would preserve this structure and as much of the open space as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Joe Landry, one thirty-four Deerfoot, Peter's neighbor. I hope the home can be preserved too, possibly we could talk to Brendan, I don't know. I've been asked to represent the neighborhood, the, specifically the Deerfoot Road Extension Neighborhood, which will be impacted by the sale. The, the neighbors are very much in favor of Peter having the opportunity to sell his property to Brendan Homes. We trust that developer, and trust that he will respect the needs of the neighborhood, and as Peter has in selecting that developer. So we're very much opposed to the town purchasing, purchasing the property. I don't know if I need to say any more than that, I think that's where it stands.
Thank you.
Brian Schiffern, Recreation Commission and CHOPSY. The, those two committees have not specifically had the opportunity to meet on this property, but I just want to say that there are significant needs by those committees for both affordable housing and recreation. And this is a significant property that, the likes of which don't come available to the town very often. And I've had the pleasure of being on committees where we successfully, but it was a challenge to restrict or preserve something on a privately owned parcel that, you know, we could have had the opportunity to buy and didn't as a town. So I think something like this very much should go before the voters of the town to, to say whether or not they, they want the opportunity to, you know, restrict or do something on this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further comments, Ms. Faniff?
I have a follow-up question, if I could have missed Gillespie. Since we're suggesting funding sources across the board as far as use, and we use the eight thousand dollars to come up with a plan, and we bring that plan to town meeting to use the indicated money that we're talking about, can that plan be changed at town meeting and go in a different direction, saying we just want open space, or we would just want this piece of it after we go?
CPA is a complicated piece of legislation, and the answer is, it depends how we write the warrant article. You can be very firm in what can be done as far as which use on which area, you can be more wide open. Again, I'm just hearing that you could purchase the whole property without saying ten acres for this and five acres for that. I think it's highly unlikely that would get support, but if you do not identify open space or historic preservation or housing, and it's sort of a, we have never done this before, but it's sort of wide open, I think at a future, and I had a conversation with the director of the Community Preservation Coalition, who informed me that you actually can do that, and then later decide how you want to segment it. I, I think, I didn't know that could be done before this week when I talked to him, I thought we had to know exactly which it was. And I suggest that having as firm an idea as possible prior to town meeting is strategically the way to go, so that citizens know what they're getting when they're voting. On the other hand, you know, you can't change the recommendation of the CPA on town meeting floor. So what comes to us and what we vote on, whether we vote to keep it wide open or to be restrictive, that's what's there. I'm not sure how it works with uses. With dollar amount, town meeting can lower the CPA dollar amount, they can never raise what we recommend to spend, so I'd have to look into that further. But there is some flexibility, depending on how you write the warrant article.
I mean, I did review another community, and there was language that we purchased the land with a concept planned, but each development stage of that plan required a town meeting vote at a later date. So if Recreation wanted to do something, or CHOPSY, or whoever, it would require a future town meeting vote to actually proceed on that, with that proposal for that landslide.
Well, kudos to you, because...
Could use checks to see if, I'll give you the name of the...
Because I hadn't gone that deep into the investigation, I was looking into other areas of the project.
All right, I was just concerned about going to town meeting with a plan, are we really at that point of saying that?
I would say that also, in the timeframe we have and the money we put out there, that was just to get an idea of what could be done. There's no way you're going to get a land use plan at that level of detail.
That this is really an idea, you're looking, what you're supporting is an idea of future use for that site, not going to town meeting saying that this is what we're going to do.
I think it's for the selectmen to decide, we wanted to help facilitate you being able to decide even if you're going to town meeting, and then to provide some information to town meeting, and to the CPC, because we do have to...
I appreciate the step you took, I was there, I appreciate that, but I just don't want to go down a path that there's no life jacket for.
We can, we can...
We'll have to call Neil back.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly, you know, prepare for those...
Okay, thank you.
...situations.
The only comment I would like to make is, is if, Mr. Schiffern, is there a way before our next meeting potentially that CHOPSY and/or Recreation can meet and take a formal recommendation? I'm just curious, I'd just be...
Yeah, both meetings are scheduled in the next week or two.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
So, I, I guess I would just offer that, so, you know, late August, we received the notice for this, and we have a hundred twenty days to present a matching offer or to the owners on this. And I'd appreciate the step that, you know, for authorizing up to eight thousand dollars for the land use study. I think back to the work that the Golf Course Master Plan Committee did, which was, it comes to my mind as a comparable, you know, land use study, and the intense amount of time it took to do that, I just don't think that we have the time available to us right now for, you know, to continue to wait on this, to, and then, you know, have, put the necessary notices that we have out for a special town meeting. My personal opinion, you know, the only, we heard from Mr. Landry tonight, who represented, and they had sent written correspondence as well, we received one other written letter from an Abutter. All the comments that I've seen from residents in the town has been not, was for the town not to act on the right of first refusal on this. I have not seen, obviously, the boards and committees have offered their opinions, but no other citizens that I've heard or spoken with have echoed those same thoughts. On the blog, for example, it was a standalone article, it was pointed out, zero comments to it, and at a time when there were over sixty comments about a yellow line on a road. So obviously, there's readership on the blog, but I don't think that this issue is resonating clearly as well. Certainly when we acted on the Golf Course parcel, we heard from Abutters, we heard from numerous residents right away on this. So, I don't know how the other board feels, if they want to evaluate this option. We've, my personal opinion is to not move forward with a special town meeting, we'd be curious to hear what others think.
My concern is the language in the warrant article, it might be restraining us from doing something else after it's passed a town meeting, that's my only concern. I believe town meeting is a forum, we're looking for a November date to act on this.
End of November, yes.
I'm concerned we're not going to do the job that we need to do to fund something like this, so I have, I don't know if I could even support it right now. Open space, if I know that we can purchase it for open space and then decide at a later date how we're going to subdivide this, I might be more comfortable with it. So, I don't think I can at this point. Not with the deadlines we have to meet, but I, how soon will we have to write the article? Does anybody know?
Got to post the warrant fourteen days in advance of the meeting, so in all likelihood, sometime in the next two, two to three weeks, you've got to have the article done.
So within two weeks, we have to have an article that can't be changed on town meeting floor? Is that my understanding, Freddie? I, I don't mean to be putting you on the spot, but you're more knowledgeable than I am on this. Once the article is written, that's the article for town meeting floor, right? It can't be changed?
Correct. Hearing that, you have to have it in two weeks?
I just asked that.
Then you could write it broadly, but it always has to meet whatever future use you do decide to use, and I like the idea of a future town meeting requirement. You, it has to meet, if you're funding it with CPA, it has to meet one of the, it has to be an allowable use under CPA. You can't change it later and say, well, let's put a high school there, or let's put some sort of building, because you can't make a building with CPA, I shouldn't say a building, you can only build housing, you can't put like a, a center of some kind. So that could be done. When you ask if open space would like the parcel, I, I wasn't sure...
No, I said, could it be purchased as open space?
Alone?
And then be subdivided up or used for afterwards?
You would have to, you would have to write the article to include the other uses somehow.
In the future.
Because then you couldn't, you know, open space, you're determining, there's a, you can't, you can't change it after the fact. So it would have to be something to the effect of, for open space, community housing, and historic preservation, and be done with it, and say, and any use would have to be approved by town meeting, and by doing that, you're ensuring it at least stays open space, because you can't do anything else with it, and it would give time to look into the historic preservation of the barn and the house if possible.
My question is, is, is the two-week timeframe realistic or unrealistic in getting this done? I agree with all of the points you made, Bonnie, completely. I, I appreciate where the neighbors, and the neighbors' position on this, very much so. But as with anything, I want to make sure that the town does its due diligence as well before we give away the right to, to excise our, our right of first refusal on the property, and whether that might be something, as Ms. Gillespie mentioned, in agreeing with some legally binding document to the number of units that can go there, with the house and the barn being preserved, I, I think that's something I would personally like to see explored before we make a decision on it.
So, you know, maybe the Dawds and their council can opine as well, but, so we've been, we've been provided with the offer, and included in the purchase and sale agreement is the statement that, you know, the, it's the premises will be for six single-family residential purposes. And, you know, I have no reason to expect that, you know, the Dawds or Brendan properties would do anything other than what is in this document. And I would think that if something different did happen other than what was in the offer presented to this board to match, that that revised offer would need to come back to us again to be matched. So, and I don't know if that could be clarified.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Wayne LeBlanc, I represent the Dawds. The, I think you'd need to carefully read the purchase and sales agreement, that's a condition between the Dawds and between the developer. The condition indicates that it is subject to the developer obtaining six A&R lots and perk A&R lots. It, it is not a condition of... It, it is not a condition of the transaction, it would not be part of the deed. And I, you might want to talk to town council, because I certainly can't give any advice to the board relative to that. But I would say that, that reading, carefully reading the document, that's a condition between the Dawds and the prospective buyer. The prospective buyer, I would say, could purchase the property under those circumstances and take whatever action the prospective buyer wants thereafter. It's not a condition of the deed. And it would not require us, I do not believe, under the statute, to return to this board should the developer decide to do something else with the land. That's not part of the real estate transaction, and I don't think it's part of the requirement under the, under the transaction. Should the transaction change with regard to the purchase price, or something related to that, or should there be a new buyer that comes up because, for example, Mr. Brendan Properties is not able to obtain the necessary lots which they want, then that would have to, I believe, come before this board again. But other than that, any of the conditions are essentially, the area, the land area, the purchase price of the property is really the essence of the, of the agreement. And again, as the board's speaking tonight, it's clear, I think it should be clear to the board, which they may be, or any other persons here, that should we complete this transaction, there will be rollback taxes that will be paid by the Dawds relating to the property. They won't be probably the taxes that they may have benefited from over all of the years, but it will be in accordance with the law as well. And that's the only information I could shed, light I could shed for the board tonight, and I think town council may be able to shed more light on it. Any other questions?
It's a total of five new homes and saving the historical property, is that how I read this?
It's subject to six A&R lots. One of those lots would have the existing home there on it. So, you're correct in indicating it would be five new lots, that's,
Right.
Again, though, I want to point out to the board, that's a condition between the developer and, I mean, for example, Brendan Homes could determine they only get three perk tests and they still want to purchase.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, this agreement with the purchaser is six lots, including the historical property as being one home.
That's correct.
Total of six.
That's correct.
So, the historical home, the intention is to save that home in this document.
I have no knowledge of whether that will happen or not. It is only, it, let me just explain, so I, I want to be clear about this. Should the developer have five perk tests that he's satisfied with, and a satisfactory inspection of the septic system, which I think we already have concerning the existing home, and then give all that information to his engineer, the engineer put together the plan, and say to us that they are satisfied with the plan, we, as far as sellers, don't have anything else to look at. We may never even see the plan. And the town may never see that plan, or that plan could be immediately submitted to the, to the planning board for an A&R approval at the time of purchase. It's not subject to the plan being approved by the planning board, but it is conditional upon the developer obtaining at least that number of lots. He could agree that I haven't obtained that number of lots and I'm still willing to purchase it for the same price.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So-
Yes, Freddie.
So, just to go back to what I stated that the Open Space Preservation Commission discussed, that once the property is sold, the property owner has complete ability to develop that land to the full extent of our zoning code and state legislation for 40B. There's no requirement that it be six lots, A&R only, roads could go through, and for whatever are, either our zoning code or using 40B, which I believe we have 180 units available. I don't know that they would put them there, but any property owner has the property right to develop their land to the full extent of our zoning code and the Massachusetts 40B law. And, and rightfully so. We're not here to discuss restricting property rights. We're here to say this is a priority for open space, it's a priority for historic preservation, we heard, and that should we look into trying to protect it in that way when we don't know. And we did say, though, if it were going to be only six lots, and the house was going to be preserved, that sounds like something, you know, we would ask that you ask town council to reach out, because if that's the intent, we don't need to even recommend going to town meeting because enough of the town's needs are met. Six lots leaves a lot of that land undeveloped, and the house not torn down. But, nothing in there says that that house will not be for demo permit, and after they go through, if we know, the historical bylaw is just delay, it's not prevention. So, it's a demo-delay bylaw, so the house, the barn in particular, which is, I think, significant, would also be able to be torn down after they go through that one-year process. So, that's why we ask that, if in fact that's what the developer plans, you know, then he would sign off on it, and we'd all be, you know, pretty comfortable in not exercising the right. But if that's not the plan, I think, you know, being aware of the full potential of the development possibility for that property is something the townspeople should know before they don't recommend protecting it. Because as many of us know, land development into housing makes all of our taxes go up almost, you know, there's, it's a real high bar to, to, the multimillion-dollar home, maybe a $2 million home pays its own way, but otherwise, even a million-plus-dollar home, everybody's in town's taxes go up to support the new services needed. So, we pay one way or the other. We protect the land, and we get the land, and get the historic preservation, and maybe some housing, and we pay for that, or housing goes in and we pay for that forevermore with our increased taxes, so.
Michael Weis, on this time, I'm speaking as the president of the Historical Society. We took a look at this, you can take a look at it as well on southboroughhistory.org. A subdivision of any of these houses, and Freddie's correct, under $2 million actually increases the tax burden. There's just no way that these houses pay for themselves. So, essentially, Freddie's absolutely correct, we either push this obligation down the road onto our tax bills, and I just opened my tax bill today. In fact, it dropped through the floor, up $200 a quarter. So, I, you know, we either shove these obligations down the road or not. And, you know, Mr. Shay, I will take pleasant exception, I think if you would frame this to the voters of Southborough about whether or not they want a tax increase, or whether they support historic preservation, or whether they'd like more open space for recreation, that would, you'd have a lot better response. At the moment, we're talking about something fairly esoteric, a 61A, which doesn't resonate with a lot of people. But I know that there are several hundred members of the Southborough Historical Society that would very much support the historic preservation of this house. So, if it's a question, you know, I would urge the board to put this in front of the voters and let the people decide their own fiscal fate. Because that's really what we're talking about, our historical legacy, our open space obligations, our, our fiscal cost as how we want to have our money spent. So, I would urge you to consider that. Thank you.
I'll make a suggestion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to suggest to this board, at their next meeting of October 17th, they have a sam, a sample draft of a warrant article that could address the concerns of not developing what a concept plan might show with a statement that at a future town meeting, if a plan is accepted, would require approval. But we need to have this by October 17th, if we're going to meet any kind of a deadline, to move this thing forward. Because we're going to be talking about it in another two weeks, and then another two weeks after that, and then we're, we're going to miss a deadline that might be there.
Is your recommendation that there be a concept plan utilizing the CPA monies?
Well, that's what CPC was suggesting.
It is. But it sounds like you're a little different than we thought the selectmen would take that, and Mark seems to feel it's a pretty, in a conversation, pretty time-intensive, just putting the RFP together. If we're not doing a full concept plan, we could maybe hire a consultant for something smaller and be, I don't know. If you're looking for-
Yeah, I, I don't, and I don't, it's not that it's all that time-intensive. I think, you know, the dollar threshold is low enough, $8,000 procurement regulations, you can do something quick, it doesn't need to be a formal RFP, as long as you're willing to go with the person who gives you the lowest price, which, on this type of thing, for this small piece, I don't think that's going to be a big deal, as long as they can give us what we're looking for. It's getting the responses back, you know, I've got something out right now looking for Golf Architects Services. Very well, Lou Pilecki, the chair of the Golf Committee, put it together, very well done. I can't get people to give me anything back. So, it, it's getting something back, then getting somebody to do the work, then giving us the product of that work, and taking that product and turning it into a document, you know, sometime in the next two to three weeks. I, I think that may be difficult to do. Not impossible, but-
Is this something, Bonnie, you would suggest that-
I'm su- I would like to have some kind of a path for going into town meeting, and we may have objections that at a future town meeting, we might be able to resolve those objections without tying up funds, and then finding out at a later date, we can't use them because we might have moved a line a little bit, or put something someplace else, and then everybody walks away dissatisfied, thinking they were getting something that's not there.
Would you be, I'm not quite sure I heard you correctly.
I'm only talking for myself, I can't speak with a-
But you're recommending that you, the selectmen do this, or do you want, like, me to work with Mark, find out the people to do it, and get the RFP out there and see if we can get it done?
We're gonna need an RFP, but I want to know what the flexibility of that warrant article be for future town meeting, instead of, I could put anything, I could take this plan here and say, "This is ideal, let's just develop that with all of these buckets of funds, and then find out if there's something we can't do, or someone doesn't like, and we say, 'Oh, we're going to move it around,' and I'm going to have a neighbor or another resident say, 'Well, that's not where it was going to go,' or we're going to have a ball, ball field down there or something else, because the expectations are so high when you use other funding sources." And I don't want disappointment, so how can we word a warrant article that might satisfy everyone? And at the same time, if, if we find that we made an error, or we want to do something else, we still have that flexibility.
One thing in our motion was that the land use planner was someone recommended by the Community Preservation Coalition, who are the experts, who would give us names of people who are familiar with what to do. And we could also look at the language you recommended and get expert opinion from the coalition on how to write a warrant article to accomplish what you're looking for. That could be done in two weeks. I don't know about a full concept plan, but having someone hired, working on it, and if not, then it's sort of a, that's off the table for now, but I certainly could have the type of language with the coalition's expert advice on how to do that, and what it would mean.
Well, if we move, if we move forward with that recommendation, I'd also hope that town council could make a phone call, and maybe that wouldn't even necessarily be needed, so, to reach out to Brendan Homes and see if the six lots are what the intent is, and if they're willing to work with the town to come up with a document for the town to forego the right of first refusal. So, if we could do those two things simultaneously, I think I would be in favor of that.
Can you throw in some historic preserving the, the house, not tearing it down?
Absolutely.
And six lots, and-
Sorry, I thought when I meant the six lot, that was the intent of the house.
Six lots with no future subdivision is what we're talking about, right? Six lots for the whole property.
With one being the house and the barn, yes.
Not torn down.
Correct.
So, we'll revisit this on October 17th.
I think if you're going to do that, we need a formal acceptance of the CPC offer from this board to at least investigate using it, and how you want to go about doing that.
I'll make a motion that the board accept the $8,000 from CPA administrative funds to allow the selectmen to hire a land consultant for the recommendations by the Community Preservation Coalition to coordinate with CPC, the Neighbors Conservation Commission, Open Space Preservation Commission, CHOPS, Historic Commission, Recreation Commission, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to create a land use plan, provided that the selectmen agreed to move forward on the acquisition of 135 Deerfoot Road, Southborough, Mass. The money is to be used within 100 days, starting after the selectmen's meeting on October 3rd, 2017, seconded by Nancy Morris, voted six yay unanimously, approved at the Community Preservation Committee meeting. So, October 17th, you're gonna, Freddie's going to work with town administrator to coordinate this piece of it. So, we need to have a draft warrant article as far as what flexibility we have by October 17th, too.
And that's going to be something that I can work with Freddie on, and then can also involve ALDO as needed with that. But again, if it's going to be CPC, it's got to be something that CPC votes. So, that's, so it's got to be an article the CPC is going to, you know, would, would bring forward, correct?
Yes, I can't guarantee a CPC meeting to have the warrant article done, I can guarantee having a warrant article that meets your needs, that is legally okay from the coalition, but the, the committee, I think, is planning to meet on the 19th of October, and I'm not sure I-
By the 17th.
What?
We need something by the 17th.
Voted by the committee? Is that when the warrant article has to be in?
We want a draft of what is being discussed by October 17th, so we can meet a November deadline for a town meeting. I mean, we all have to call meetings sometimes, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just looking to see who was in the room that was on my committee, and I-
All right.
I'll, I'll work on it, sorry.
So, is there a second to Ms. Vance's motions?
Second.
Moved, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Ballantyne, preliminary discussion of FY 2019 operational budget.
So, Mr. Chairman, while Brian-
Quick transition, yeah.
Yeah, while Brian transitions into this, this is, this is the, this is the same presentation, a similar presentation, that, that Brian and I have done in the past. It just kind of, for the past couple of years, it just gives you a little bit of a preview as to where we closed out last year, where we're going this year, and what we're looking at for next fiscal year. It's by no means the roadmap we're going to stick to, but it's a starting point, and it's a starting point for the discussion. There'll also be some items that potentially, you know, might be, that the departments are looking to include in their FY 19 budget, but, you know, given, given where we are here at the beginning, you know, there are things that may not end up in the budget. If it's something that the board, you know, really doesn't want to consider, or isn't looking to look at for this coming year, feel free to, yeah, let us know now. You know, it's, it's, you know, or it's something that you may not be interested in, that's good information for us to have. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Hello, again. Budget talk, this is a little early to begin some of these discussions, but we do like to do it in early to mid-October to give the board just a little bit of a heads-up, what's coming down the, the pike for us. So, just as another reminder, fiscal year 17 ended June 30th of 17. The annual audit is underway now, they've been on-site once, they'll be on-site again in about two weeks to complete their field work. So, that will be done in probably another month, a month and a half. And at that time, we'll set up a meeting with the board in December, as we usually do, for the auditor to meet and discuss issues, or just data, or things that he may want to know. No significant issues are known, thank goodness, we always like that. One piece of bad news is, and we just got our free cash certified last week, Friday, actually, it's down about $350,000, actually, I said 300, it's about 350. That's as a source of revenues for the next year, so, that's obviously not, not a good thing. That's a result of a couple of things, we had a bunch of years- Um, we had a bunch of year-end transfers last year that the Board may recall. Um, we also depleted the Reserve Fund, uh, snow and ice and some other things. And, um, the departmental return backs were real low. Some of the budgets are a little tighter, have become tighter over the last few years. And we do have a few accounts, such as the Public Safety, DPW, Benefits. Uh, Benefits can be a big one that gets turned back. And it didn't turn back hardly, hardly anything last year. So that, that's a, it's kind of like a loss, like free cash. If it goes down to the next year, it's, that, that, you know, that's part of why, why that happened. Fiscal year seventeen continued. Other post-employment benefits, we keep doing the two hundred and fifty thousand per year, which is a good policy for now. So we actually have, this was, uh, before we transferred in the latest two hundred and fifty thousand. So we actually have a little bit more money in that account, uh, as of today. Stabilization fund, um, as the Board may know, it's been pretty stable. At about five hundred and fifty thousand for the last several years. Uh, and the Community Preservation Fund, I think we've beaten that to death. But that, that's just the current balance without, um, project money going out. So it's kind of a snapshot. It's not, it's not what they have to just spend. It's just a snapshot of today of, uh, or June thirtieth of what their balance was. Scheduled capital requests, we, this is akin to what, uh, the Town Administrator and myself did last week. We met with Advisory Committee and, um, talked about the capital a bit. We, the intention again was not to get into the detailed, uh, line-by-line equipment or should we buy a plow or should we buy this or that. It's more of taking the, uh, requests that we've got, putting them in, um, uh, you know, put them in, putting them in our schedule and seeing where we, uh, stand for, for fiscal nineteen. Um, so the, uh, membership of the Capital Committee internally is just the, uh, myself, the accountant, and, uh, the Town Administrator. Uh, we've met with some departments already about some of their, some of their requests. So the plan has been recently updated, then got another update, then actually got another update last week because, um, some of the departments, um, it, it's sort of a working document where some of the departments, uh, you know, come to me or, or Mark and just, you know, discuss things that they either think of or that's modified as time goes by. So the plan was kind of, uh, has been updated very recently. Um, further discussion to take place as large projects move forward. Um, as the Board, I think, had a copy of the plan. And then there's a few very large projects in there that will require a lot of vetting as we go forward. So, um, we'll be, uh, we'll be doing that. All the eighteen, this is just a side note, all the eighteen capital budget inside the operational budget, sounds confusing, but we put, um, a department, a capital budget department, um, in the budget that's separate from the warrant articles, mostly for recurring things. And we usually give an update in the middle of the year or, or towards the beginning of the year now on the status of that. They've all, it was a short list last year, as you can see, but they've all been received. And, uh, so we have all that equipment. This is a summary of the capital. You may have seen it before. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it. But, um, again, the point is the, uh, large increase for next year that's, that's potentially, um, out there. Um, that will be coming, uh, forward to the Board at a later date to discuss. New initiatives, this is one of the things, the main things we would like to talk about at this time. Um, there's not as many as last year. That's the good news. There are still some. Um, the Town Administrator and myself have, uh, tried to get the message out there. This should be more of a maintenance budget, we feel, this year for fiscal nineteen. Um, that being said, there are a couple of departments that are looking at doing some things a little differently or doing some new things. So the library, um, is investigating the creation of Assistant Library Director. They recently lost a, a senior librarian there, um, to the benefit of the townhouse. And, um, I, I believe Ryan may, uh, do some reorganization down there. I, I hear it's not going to be a, a big funding issue, uh, but the details are still being worked out on that. So the Police Department is, um, putting forward one new officer to achieve the three-man minimums on most patrols. You're gonna hear more about that. The chief will be, um, I'm sure diligently preparing some, some good data to try and support that. Um, as you know, I think this is the third year, in final year, uh, I believe he will be going for this. Um, so that's, that's another thing the Board wants to consider, the ramifications. As we gave enough speeches last year, myself and, and Mark, about the cost of new personnel. And, um, uh, it's, it's pretty self-evident. It's very expensive to hire a person. Training, the person himself, the benefits, fringe benefits, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a discussion that we're gonna want to delve into quite a bit. Youth and family, this is the second year they have tried for this money to increase their program coordinator to nineteen hours during the school year, which is about two hundred hours, uh, fiscal, fiscal year, or about thirty-two hundred dollars. Sarah, the director there, um, has some good information that will be provided at a later date on that, too, that she just gave me describing the benefits and, and the reasons behind that. And lastly, the addition of Personnel Director, which we have discussed, uh, the last year or two also, to the Town, uh, the Assistant Town Administrator. Um, the Personnel Board will have to vet that themselves. And, um, ob- obviously, I think the Board is aware, the Personnel Board is underway with, um, reviewing the bylaw, the Personnel Board bylaw, or the SAP. And, uh, I have a feeling they'll be discussing this, this piece along with that. And then after that, it'll come before us. Other notes, little miscellaneous notes. Um, this is a surprise. The PS Building, uh, Public Safety Building will begin. The options are still being considered. We haven't, uh, uh, at least for funding-wise, we have not, um, made a lot of progress since I was last before the Board on this yet. The capital, the general fund, um, again, about one point five million more for fiscal nineteen than eighteen. So I believe we touched on that again before. Debit obligations, uh, could increase another one point five million, depending on, um, more timing than anything and how the, uh, several projects we have out there kind of filter through. So we'll, we'll be doing a five-year budget estimate. I was, I, I was unable to do it up until recently because we, like I said, the state had to, um, settle a, a bunch of our numbers. Uh, appears that we're, we're close to getting them all, uh, settled. So we're kind of in a position where I can draft something up. Uh, new growth that we've estimated has usually been conservative, but, um, this past year we're a couple of hundred thousand higher than, um, where we had estimated, which is a good thing. It's, sometimes that's a little squirrely to, to pin down. Uh, we usually try to do three to four hundred thousand, which seems to be, we can always match that. Um, part of it, uh, the assessor will, will discuss this in his tax rate setting in a few weeks, but, or, or next month. But part of that is personal property, which he, uh, there's several reasons, but he's not able to, um, he doesn't always know on a year-to-year basis how that's gonna, um, the new growth that's gonna come out of that. It's very, it's very last minute. It's very unexpected sometimes. Local revenue and local aid, we don't get a lot of local aid, but it is, we are counting on it being level-funded and, uh, as the local revenue side also, uh, both of them. So there's no new revenues there. Um, the local revenues, uh, are steady. They're not going down or anything, so that's good news. But they're not really, um, going up either in any significant way. And local aid, I think, I think we all know the, uh, state is, is struggling a little bit now in balancing, uh, their accounts. So I think level-funded is, is a very reasonable estimate to keep for, keep for that. The last bullet, I, 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 it, it's more interesting than, than anything else. Um, unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know how anyone looks at this, but the tax, average tax bill may exceed ten thousand dollars next year. There's a real possibility of that. So, um, I don't know where that puts Southborough on the map of, um, notoriety, but. The next dates of importance, uh, next week, we do have a Budget Planning Group meeting. That is a meeting we've had, uh, it only happens once or twice a year. And, um, it's typically a member of this Board, so hopefully you guys know who's coming.
Coming.
Great. Um, it, it's a Superintendent, Mark, myself, typically the Town Accountant, uh, Town Assessor, uh, the Business Manager for the Schools, Member of Advisory. And it's a real informal group where we get together and sort of, um, uh, talk about what's going on with budgets. And, you know, can we get an idea of, you know, maybe what the town's doing? Maybe what certain departments in the town are doing. Capital might be an issue that we, we may want to talk about next week with the schools. Conversely, schools will talk about their staffing and, and what's going on with them, the, um, the, their capital needs, et cetera, et cetera. It's a real collaborative effort that, uh, especially for Mark and myself, we can get an idea of, of where we're going with the budget. So the budgets will be released and collected in, in November, later November, to be, uh, specific. We will get them back. Uh, Mark and myself will meet with the departments, again, as we usually do, review the detailed budgets and get recommendations, uh, from us and have discussions with them. Um, Advisory will also get the capital and the, the budgets concurrently, um, or close to it, as we can, with, uh, with Mark and myself. So we're, we're pushing it a little ahead this year, just so we can move along. Um, I guess the, the idea is to move along more in parallel, instead of having Advisory come in late or anything like that. So hopefully that helps. We'll see how that works. Um, as you know, January and February, even March, very, very busy times for the selectmen, for budgets and everything else for town meeting, and also Advisory. That's, that's pretty much, uh, those three months are, tend to be a blur for all of us. And then the BOS, or the Board of Selectmen, will vote on the budgets. And, and the Feb-, hopefully the February, uh, time period in the annual town meeting is, is, um, coming up in April. So I would just say that, um, again, it's not meant to be a, a downer or anything, but it's gonna be a challenging year. Um, we've done the, I've done the first quick, dirty, very dirty estimate, which I won't give you the detailed numbers of the budget next year. And, and not surprisingly, the tax rate was, um, pretty significant. Uh, the Public Safety Building, if it is funded in full next year, it's gonna be a very big challenge. Um, if it is not in piecemeal, there'll still be a challenge, but one I think we can work down a bit to a reasonable level. So the Board, I would hope, uh, the members of the Board would think about what they're willing to support for budgets, uh, county and school, and what kind of tax increase they may want to, um, you know, in their own minds, consider may be palatable this year. Uh, we'll need to know that as we move along in reviewing these.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, Brian, average single-family home, what value do you use to project ten thousand dollars? It should be on the slide, whatever that number is.
Well, the cut, the average now is, well, it just came out. It just got updated. I think it was about six fifty, six seventy-five, something like that.
Any other question? Any new personnel or any organizational changes in any department? I would think you would ask for a, a chart, an organizational chart of that department and the functions of the new individual, if it's added.
Oh, sure, sure. Absolutely.
I would need to see something that, you know.
Absolutely. I think the, the, the bar, as you, as your terminology, the bar is gonna be set very high this year. And in terms of, uh, the Town Administrator and myself at least, supporting any, any type of new hours or, or, or new, new positions or anything like that, that may increase, um, you know, increase, uh, funding needs.
Yeah, I think that was stated clearly last year, and I have to say, I agree with you.
End of the guests. Thank you very much for your presentation. Very thorough. Next, uh, Appointment Committee Interviews and Appointments. Michael Robbins, candidate for ZBA alternate position. Mr. Robbins is here. If you could, uh, make yourself comfortable, either at a seat up front or the podium, whichever you prefer. Thank you very much for coming in this evening. Appreciate you taking the time.
Hello.
Hello. So, um, we do have an opening, uh, vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's, uh, one of the alternate positions, and we have had that vacancy since July first of this year. Uh, Mr. Robbins is the only one who has reached out and shown interest and applied for that position. Uh, Mr. Robbins had interviewed previously, uh, for a ZBA position, uh, the last fall or in the spring. Get exactly the, the timeframe. Um, so we thought we'd have you in again. I know that, uh, Lisa was not on the Board at the time. She did not have an opportunity to meet with you as well. So I guess if you could just give us a brief introduction of yourself, what you do, what, uh, and your interest in the Board.
Thank you. Um, Michael Robbins, forty-seven Deerfoot Road, uh, recently moved back to Southborough. I've been in Southborough now just about since May of sixteen. Prior to that, my family moved here in seventy-nine. And I've lived in Southborough, uh, from seventy-nine to, say, ninety-two, ninety-three, and then intermittently back and forth in that time. I'm a real estate attorney. I practice, uh, primarily residential conveyance work. So if you buy, sell, or refinance a house, I'm typically the attorney that would handle that paperwork and, um, handling that purchase, sale, or refinance. I do typically, uh, commercial work, typically under nine million, usually condo conversions, um, uh, things of that nature. So converting a single-family house into a multi-family dwelling, typically more in greater Boston. Uh, I've been practicing as a real estate attorney for seventeen years. Um, I'm, I served on the, uh, Town of Grafton Zoning Board for just over four years. I was the clerk, uh, before I moved from Grafton back to Southborough. Trying to think anything else. You know, probably self-admitted zoning nerd.
Very good.
Uh, most people start falling asleep immediately during any zoning, mention of zoning matters. And, uh, it's actually something I have some interest in.
So just a couple of questions I have initially. So in your work, uh, as you described with condo conversions and other commercial work, uh, do you do projects in Southborough typically? Have you done them in the past?
I never have. I never have, not in Southborough. Typically, it's more, having lived in Rhode Island for about twenty years, it's much more common in Rhode Island, for example, if you had a multi-family house or a, uh, mu- mixed-use development. Mixed-use development is much more common. Uh, same, like I just did a project in Revere, and I did a condo conversion of a multi-unit dwelling. Uh, in Southborough, it's just, it's never come up.
So I'm just trying to get a sense for, you know, if there would be any potential conflicts that you could see, whether you typically do work with, you know, the developers who typically do business in Southborough.
I typically never work with, uh, I've worked, I think, with one or two developers in my career, and it might be for a specific project. Typically, it would be the homeowner that would say, hey, Mike, I want to convert my home. And can you please help me do that? And that's something that I do. Uh, if there were a conflict of interest, so in my time as Grafton, Grafton, there wasn't a ton of, uh, activity, but I never had to recuse myself once in Grafton. And if there were any conflicts, like if I was working with a Realtor or developer, I'd clearly recuse myself. I mean, that's really simple and easy to do.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Other questions?
I, I think I asked my questions the last time, so I'm not gonna repeat them. But I'm just curious, since we had such, um, a desire from the community to fill a position, I'll ask go around. What did we do as a town to make any of those individuals aware of this vacancy? I know people can go to the website and look them up, but there are vacancies that we put out there for people to see right on the front page. Um, so did we do anything to notify the other candidates that this position is vacant again? Since we have received letters, I'll make fairness.
The only, so the only other candidate that, that I think probably would be, um, applicable that was, uh, due the last time, which was a year ago, would be Mr. Green. Um, and there was some, uh, email correspondence between myself and Mr. Green, and, and, you know, I shared that with you. And so he's not interested at this time. Um, Mr. Stivers is a candidate, uh, to sit on this Board. Um, did not reach out to him because I figured he, you know, has, uh, no, enough going on right now. Um, and, uh, obviously, um, uh, the, uh, the, the previous alternate who declined to be reappointed, which is why we're sitting here with this opening right now. And then Mr. Muria, who was pla- And then Mr. Muria, who was placed, uh, on the, on the board as an alternate. Um, so those were, and, and Mr. Robbins, uh, and that, those, so that was your group of candidates.
Okay. I just think it needed to be stated why. I know Mr. Stivers withdrew because it was not a full-time membership, correct, Sam?
Um, I have some questions. Also, and I'd like to expand a little further on what Bonnie said as well. Um, you answered my first two questions right off the bat. Thank you very much. That makes it much easier. Um, do you, I'm gonna, actually, Brian had asked you this, but I'm gonna ask it as well. So you have no relationships currently with any of the local developers in town that may come before ZBA at this time?
This time, no. I know Bill De Petri. I should know the name of one of the other builders, and his names escapes me, but I've never.
Never done work for them?
No.
Okay. Um, what do you hope to bring to this board? I'm, I'm sure you've seen some of the controversy over the last couple of years. And, um, what would you hope to bring to the board to bring a little bit of, uh?
Sadly, uh, I think I'd probably be relatively boring for the board. I'd like to think so. It is a quasi-judicial board. As a practicing real estate attorney, it's something that I have regular experience with. And a real working background knowledge of, um, the, the zoning bylaws and the state's overall statutes regarding those. Really, to me, the zoning board of appeals is, there are zoning regulations and whether it's a special permit or a variance. And there are really pretty straightforward guidelines set by the state. The candidate, whether it's a deck, whether it's a development, either meets the requirements or they don't. It's really not, it shouldn't be as politicized as it is. If it's as boring as it's supposed to be, um, then I'm doing my job. Uh, people need zoning relief, whether it's a deck, a septic system, setbacks, like my house on 47 Deerfoot. I mean, it's a bowling alley. It's, I think, I have 45 feet of frontage. My house is on the road. If I needed a septic new leaching field, I'd be begging for help at the zoning board. And that's what the job's for. Um, I'm not pro or anti-development on any way. Um, I just, I feel like it's something that I can do, that I liked. I'm going to some easement seminar at the Worcester Registry of Deeds in two weeks. Like, I, I'm an incredibly boring person. But this is the stuff that I find interesting. I believe in community service. Honestly, genuinely, I do. And I feel like it's something that, it's interest to me and that my skill set is apt for the benefit for the town. Uh, it's something that I literally read about in my free time. Um, I do want to clarify, I did one purchase and sale agreement at some point for Mr. De Petri's sister, maybe six or eight years ago, but I did just, I wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Um, have you been to any of our ZBA meetings?
I have, and I watch them online. I'm the guy that was in New Orleans watching Southborough's ZBA meetings in New Orleans. Um, yeah, no, I've got, I've got some issues.
And so I'm assuming you are somewhat familiar with the zoning in Southborough?
I am.
And, um.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, let me see. I think that is most of my questions. Um, that is most of my questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the honest answers on those.
Yeah.
For discussion?
Yes.
Um, I have spoken to some people today as well. I know some people had emailed. Um, the only thing I would ask is that the ZBA, well, it's a permitting board, and it, it has a very important function in town, that, um, I would like to see it advertised one final time to see if any candidates come out. Back in 2016, uh, in June, Conservation Commission actually did a, a nice form that it was emailed out because it was news on the town website, and the blog actually did an article on it as well. Um, I'd just like to make sure where it's a permitting board that we're reaching as many possible people as we can. It has nothing to do with your qualifications at all. Um, I can tell you when I tried to get on Open Space, when I was on the Open Space Commission, it took a year for me to get on and attending meetings. So, um, I just think where it is a permitting board, I'd like to just, um, make sure that we get the best candidate. Again, not saying that it's not you. Uh, and I appreciate your diligence in doing this last October. Uh, I started to watch the actual interview meetings. I'm kind of a nerd that way myself. And, um, so I appreciate it and I appreciate you coming forward. I just don't know if we take two more weeks and advertise it because there was some question by some people. Um, what we do have concerning also is, you know, there are 57 open vacancies on town boards and committees now too. So, um, I would also, I know in the past, I also went back and did some, some researching as well. I know, and it's not just the blog, but the blog had also done a, in 2014, when there was an open position on the ZBA. The, the blog had actually, um, done an article on that as well. Um, that being said, um, I would just like to do it one final time. And at our next meeting, if somebody comes forward to interview, then, you know, we can discuss it going forward, um, at that time. And I would also know, I know ZBA in the past has also made recommendations, um, on people that have come forward, whether it be an alternate or whatnot, and I'd kind of like to get ZBA's feedback on this as well. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah. Um. But, I mean, there was some brief correspondence in there from Mr. Dennington. And I guess you had reached out to him or he had reached out to you.
We just saw each other at church one day.
Yeah.
And, you know, assume a discussion ensued.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, correspondence indicates that he thought that Mr. Robbins would make a good addition to the board. You know, I, I understand the concern that you have. I guess I'm coming from the perspective, I think that gives even more credit and credence to Mr. Robbins for being so diligent and.
Agreed.
And following through and applying for this. And, you know, whatever effort, you know, was made to, to advertise for the position, that certainly was enough to have Mr. Robbins, you know, continue with his interest. Um, so I would, I'm, I'm curious to hear how Ms. Fanaf feels in this as well. Cause I, you know, I could be, you know, convinced to, uh, you know, and it also, and to Mr. Dennington, Dennington's credit. I mean, he's operating right now with that board with one short member. Um, there is, you know, one of his members who needs to, who does need to recuse himself, uh, for one of the issues that comes. So he is dealing with a shorthanded board that I think we ought to make an effort to, to make whole as well. So, Ms. Fanaf.
I mean, this, probably for the last six months, this board has been under a microscope. And they've been criticized that we don't reach out. And when people do reach out, I'm not sure we actually reach out to them again when there's a vacancy. I know, I know Mr. Robinson, it has, Robinson, has nothing to do with him. I just think that we need to really make an effort when we know that people are dissatisfied with what we're doing. And that is the case right now. Um, whether it be my performance or any of our performances, I think we may need to make that extra step. Again, October 17th, if that's our next meeting.
Yep.
If anybody chooses to put their name in, they best be here.
Yep.
On the 17th. Mr. Robinson.
Well, they need to get their information in by the time the agenda is published.
For an interview. I mean, we see the commitment we have of an individual that, that needs to happen. And it's till June 2018, is this appointment?
Yes, they're one year, alternate, it's one year appointments.
To fill that vacancy, okay.
Okay.
I mean, that's my position. You don't have to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
Uh, last appointment, Roger Challen, uh, regarding the new technology committee bylaw. Mr. Challen, to provide a brief update to us on, uh, on the committee.
Roger Challen, 29 Oak Hill Road. I'd also like to point out that Claire Reynolds is here. Uh, my previous member from the Ad Hoc MTC, because I believe that term ended on the period. And, uh, compared with the previous chair. When I asked to, um, sorry, 29 Oak Hill Road, I say that. Um, when I asked to come before the board, I think it was back in, you know, July. Um, I actually just had a couple of questions. Um, I think the board appropriately suggested that, uh, any discussion about this new MTC should probably wait until the Attorney General approved it, not that there was much chance that it wouldn't be approved. Nonetheless, understood that. So the questions I had were related to the formation of the new committee. And I know that this is not a unique situation. Um, but I think it's at least unusual where you have appointments being made by three separate elected votes. Although the, uh, the selectmen are really in charge and because it's in the selectmen's article that was passed. So my question at the time were, um, let's just say that my questions now are, have you all actually come up with a process you're going to use, um, to, I guess, put this board in place?
Hold the mic up a little higher, please, Roger.
It's a hangover from experience at town meeting, I guess. And I should also recommend that, um, probably combining this number four on the schedule of appointments with the extending the MTC until October 19th is covered. I'll probably talk about it both right now, see if I can come back to it. Um, but the question is, um, maybe determine the process if so, what is the process? Probably the third part of what's.
Thank you, Terry. Um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, unaccustomed as I am to public speaking. Um, are you looking, or were you looking to have the, I don't like to say old, the ad hoc MTC kind of support this transition in, in, in some way? And if so, how, um, did you want them to do it? Um, I'll stop.
I'm aware of no process in place. Um, I'm open to suggestions, and I would hope that we would wait till we get our new fifth member.
Okay. So that basically is, is at least an answer that says you'd really like to wait to begin the process until after the election?
No, we can, we can begin the process.
That tells me something.
No, we can begin the process, but to finalize it, I think as a courtesy to the newest member, they should be part of that. That's, that's, that's how I feel.
That's the, that's your, that's your all's decision.
That's mine.
Um, hearing that, then I, I'm going to make a suggestion regarding the line item that says, um, extend the, I guess it's maybe even reappoint the MTC committee until October 17th. If, if that's really what you're thinking you should do, then I suggest you don't bother. Because having the MTC come back in for two weeks will make no sense and will be of no help to you. I know we had our last meeting, uh, on Friday, and we were going to recommend, um, that if you're going to extend the MTC, we were thinking 30, we were thinking 60. We, um, we, we kind of compromised on 45, thinking that probably 45 days, if you wanted the committee to help, um, would be enough to maybe get through the process. Sounds like that won't be quite long enough if you're really going to wait until the election to kind of get going on it. So I suggest that you consider, um, I don't know if I can, through the chair. I don't know if Claire is thinking maybe would 60 days make more sense? We're just, we're just talking as private citizens now, not as, not as committee members. Um, to perhaps, you know, provide some help for them to get started. Because that's really about the only function that, uh, that I think is appropriate at this point in time. So, um, I can tell you that schools has not discussed this, but I can, um, I'm going to suggest that there'll probably, although it's not on the agenda yet, probably be some discussion about, um, how they're thinking about their appointments at the next school committee meeting. It's not on the agenda yet, however, so I'm, I'm, I can't guarantee that. But I think that, that meeting's next Wednesday. And I have no idea, um, what the library may or may not have discussed. So again, if you're gonna put, put a couple of folks back in place on this committee to help in the transition, then I would suggest you do it for 60 days, which basically fits more into your timeframe, or don't bother.
No, I mean, that was, that's my suggestion. And I, I agree we need a transition, period. I can't come up with a date because I don't, I don't know what was discussed at your meeting. I mean, if you feel that it's 60 days, I don't, I'm just talking for myself, Roger.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying you can't get, if, if you, if you move the process, if you will, out a bit, you're not going to get through it by October 19th. Nothing's, nothing, nothing is going to happen. So that's really what I have to say. If you'd like to recognize Claire.
Thank you.
Can we fix the mic?
Yeah, now it's too high, Roger.
That's okay. Um, thank you, Claire Reynolds, former MTC chair. Um, just a couple of things. Unlike the, um, candidates for the zoning board, we actually have five very, very good people who have submitted their applications. And the, the concern that I have is that, and one of the things to take into consideration is, um, there has been a tremendous amount of work that was done in order to put together everything that needed to, um, go to put forth the article that was approved at town meeting. Having said that, and the fact that there are five good people, I think that one of the things that the, the three committees working together, because they all are elected committees, have to realize, it's not like they're picking their own candidate. Um, and yes, granted, you have to, uh, the schools have put out a request to have candidates send in to the superintendent. Um, no deadline date. Mark put the, um, notice out for the board of selectmen, and he did have a date in there of September 29th. Is that correct?
Please, I guess.
Don't want to put words in your mouth. And, um, as I said, uh, or as Roger said, we don't really know about the library. So it's the kind of thing that I'm really very afraid of seeing the momentum drop. This is a really important committee for a lot of the decisions that will be made, which are, um, big expenses. So having said that, um, we did have the motion for the 45 days. I totally agree with Roger, again, just speaking, um, as myself, that the 60 days. And I, I really think it needs to be a joint, let's sit down and let's make sure that everybody who's picking people totally understand, um, what's required in these positions. Um, like I, I just simplify it, you know, technology is a lot of things. It's networking, it's hardware, it's software, it's security, it's all of those. And we need people with skill sets in each one of those individual categories. Questions?
Thank you.
No. Please.
Obviously, the process decision is yours, but I'm just going to leave you with, uh, maybe some food for thought. It was, um, in some discussions that, um, I don't know, a number of us have had about this matter. One thing to at least consider from a process standpoint is for the, the boards to identify, um, whether it's one or two folks that they'd like to have on the selection, the committee, if you will. And that the three, and that the, and that the candidate. and that the three, and that the members of those boards potentially meet together to interview candidates. So you don't end up having a lot of duplication as far as interviews and missing out on some good questions that one board might have, that the other board maybe didn't think of. So maybe considering some kind of structure like that might be at least worth thinking about. Thank you.
Actually, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Go on to reports. Chair's report on behalf of Mr. Kalenda. Just want to note that we did receive a letter today from National Grid in reference to the Main Street Route 30 pole relocations, which I would just, it's a brief letter which I would read. It's addressed to Mr. Purple, the town administrator. "We have reviewed the proposals from the town and from Mr. Perry to relocate the poles on Main Street in the downtown area. Due to the extensive private property relocations and no formal roadway to install our equipment, National Grid will not be able to accept these proposals as viable options. The distribution line that currently exists on Main Street is a main distribution feeder for Southborough and other towns as well. The reliability of this feeder is a main concern of National Grid and relocating our equipment off the public way would compromise our ability to maintain our facilities in a timely manner. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Ann Mailey, customer and community manager, National Grid." So we have received this letter. It's about two months following the meeting that we had with National Grid to discuss with them the proposals for relocating the poles based on this correspondence. And I do not feel that any further action is necessary or should be taken by this board. If there's any difference of opinion?
Nope. Just posted.
Yep, agreed.
On our town's Selectmen's website.
Absolutely.
They'll do. Any other comments, questions? And that's all I have under Chair's report. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick items. The first one is to let you know that the fire chief's contract is coming up for renewal. His contract expires on March 4th, 2018. There is a clause in his contract requiring notice in advance of that date. And he has reached out to me, indicated an interest in opening discussions about that contract. And I plan to be sitting down with him and having conversations just so we can get an idea of, you know, where he's at, what he's looking for. And then I can bring those discussions back to this board and can see how you want to proceed, whether you'd like to do that through me, as has been done in the past, or whether you'd like to do this directly with the chief. So I just want to let you know that that is, that process is beginning. One of the other things I do want to point out, and, you know, since we have the cameras and the mics, let's use the bully pulpit a little bit. We talked about committees tonight. Cable committee, we have tried to fill that. We have three members, but no, up to five members, but at least three members. We currently only have one member that is sitting on that committee and we need several more. I think Ms. Braccio had pointed out that we've got 57 openings on 31 committees at this point. Some of them are more active than others. But this committee is pretty inactive most of the time. But over the next three, four years, it's going to be very busy. Because we have our three cable licenses coming up. Verizon is coming up in 2019, Charter in 2020, and Comcast in 2021. The ascertainment period is open already on two of those contracts. Okay, the ascertainment period opens 36 months in advance of the expiration of those contracts. So, you know, we begin the process of informal negotiations. And if we get to reach agreement, great. If not, we go through the formal ascertainment process. I've done it once. It's not pretty. And it's very formal and it takes a lot of time. So we need to get members, you know, to sit on this cable committee. It's very important work. We do hire a specialized cable attorney. And, you know, people usually use only one, you know, there's one or two that are used. That attorney's fees are paid for out of cable revenues, which are made to be used for this purpose. But we need people to be involved to do this and people who are willing to help serve on these. Again, it's a short, it's probably, because of the three contracts, it's probably going to be, you know, a four-year, you know, three or four-year commitment to see this through for all three contracts. However, you know, the lifting is not heavy. You will be working with a specialized attorney who deals with these and will be, you know, reporting back to the Board of Selectmen on these issues. So if there are people that are interested, we ask that you please submit an application because it is an important committee and we are, you know, you mentioned that ZBA is struggling with people. This is, we don't have enough people to even get this committee going yet. And we're already a little bit behind on some of these things. The only thing I will point out is I was hoping to have something to talk to you about this evening regarding where we are with our special act in the legislature in terms of our ability to close on the property with St. Mark's and effectuate the land transaction approved by town meeting under Article 1 of the March Town Meeting. Unfortunately, I have no update at this point. Last, we heard from our heroes. We are waiting for the Senate to engross the bill. Once the Senate engrosses the bill, it goes back to the House for the formal vote and it goes back to the Senate for the formal vote, and it goes to the governor's desk for signature. So it appears to me then unless things start moving very quickly, we are no closer to the end than we were a couple of months ago. So I'll continue to push with the legislature and continue to try and see what traction we can get. I know that Town Council has also been trying to reach out to Senate Council to see, you know, when this is going to get scheduled.
Mark, can I ask if, say it gets delayed, I know we anticipated the end of September. If it unfortunately ends up being the end of October, how does that affect the timeframe for the Public Safety Building?
So fortunately, things continue to move forward. We are in, we're in design development phase right now, probably until the end of November. And then we enter into 16 weeks of construction documents. The fact that the transaction of the property has not happened yet is not holding things up. You know, I share, you know, the one thing, and I think I've mentioned it to this board in the past, when we did the special act, we did not put an effective date. The effective date is then defaults to 30 days after the governor signs the bill. What I have asked Senator Eldridge to do is that before it is engrossed in the Senate, and it cannot be done before it is engrossed, but it has to be done on the floor when the bill is up for a vote to be engrossed, is that they can add in the language, you know, to take effect upon passage. Okay? That gives the Senate, or that gives the legislative process a little more time rather than my original idea of get this done by the end of September, 30 days, and then we can look at a closing at the beginning of November. So they could still wrap this up sometime in the next two to three weeks and we could still look to close in the ballpark of when we're looking to close originally.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Oh, sorry.
So we'll move on to consent agenda. Item one, approve meeting minutes, September 19th, 2017. Item two, extend municipal technology committee and economic development committee appointments to October 17th, 2017. Three, accept donations at $224 for Southborough Youth Family Services. Item four, appoint Laura Bertinazzi to Southborough Scholarship Advisory Committee, term 630, 2020. Lastly, appoint to Southborough Cultural Arts Council for the terms 1022 through 1022-19, Louise Clough, Jane Gordon. And from the term 10317 to 10319, Kimberly Denise Galbreth, Gloria Lindell, Linden, I'm sorry. Kayla Monzac, Mary Peekarts, Jennifer Pollan, Kimberly Regan, Catherine Weber. So those are the five items that we have.
I had some minor edits to one, the September 19th minutes. Do you want to leave those until the next time? I'll just hand them to Mark. What do you want to correct this evening? It makes no difference to me. They're minor in nature.
Why don't you pass them along to Mark and you can redistribute them in their final form?
There's just some duplications.
Yep. Table item one, extend the municipal technology committee and the economic development committee appointments. Based on what we heard tonight, do we want to change the date on that?
Extend it another 60 days.
To...
December?
December 17th?
Yep.
If that makes sense?
That's fine.
For both? Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think technology is, you know, we're trying to keep these the same. I think the technology, after what we've heard tonight from Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Challen, this is all, technology is a different animal than EDC. I think that a lot of the people who are applying for EDC are the same people that you have currently on the committee. So it's going simply from committee to commission. And I think the board may be prepared to make appointments to the new commission at the next meeting. If I'm wrong, then I'll stop and we can do what you want to do. But I think you may want to treat those differently considering you're looking at a different process, potentially a joint process with the school, school committee and the trustees. So if you want to extend out, you know, say extend out to December 1, you know, for technology. And quite honestly, I think you may want to leave EDC right where it is on the 17th.
Have there been any other applications other than those that are currently sitting?
I'm looking at Lori. She's not saying anything. So I'm going to say that it's pretty, yeah, that the, off the top of my head, it's been the usual suspects, the same group of people that have been sitting on the committee so far.
Okay.
All right. So for item two, I'll move that we extend the municipal technology committee to December 1st, 2017. And EDC appointments to October 17th, 2017. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And three, accept the donation to Southborough Youth and Family Services.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll move to appoint Laura Bertinazzi to Southborough Scholarship Advisory Committee. Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Want to abstain? And lastly, the appointments to the Southborough Cultural Arts Council. I'll move as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Other matters properly before the board is the draft charge for the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee. We had discussed this at our last meeting. Mr. Purple has prepared a draft of the charge based on comments received. So I don't know how we want to move forward. I know Mr. Kalenda has indicated his request that we hold on this until the 17th. I don't think that we're in a position to make any appointments tonight. We haven't not received recommendations from the appointed commissions, is that correct? For representation on this?
That's correct. I think we have, I have one at-large representative, one member of the community who has submitted an application. And I believe we have something back from conservation and then something from OSPC. So I don't have anything yet from the Golf Course Committee and nothing from Recreation.
So again, I don't think that we're in a position to make any appointments tonight. Would be curious to know if there are any other comments on the charge. Do we want to approve the charge tonight? Do we want to hold off on approving till the next meeting and maybe possibly handle the appointments then as well?
That's fine.
Ms. Braccio, any other suggestions?
My only concern with holding off on the charge is we're getting under a timeframe on making the six to eight months with the EE...
OA.
Thank you. EE OA. When council was here, they said it would be six to eight months to put it through. That would put us through July 1st, which would mean like a November 1st deadline.
Yep.
If we, my concern is if we don't do the charge and possibly some of the appointments, we're going to give this committee two weeks, basically, to start having meetings and get the job done. I think that's a huge hurdle for any committee, working group, subcommittee to face. So I don't know. I'm up for discussion on that, but I just think...
My personal opinion was is that we should at least approve the charge and take care of the appointments at the next meeting so that, you know, as soon as possible after the next meeting, that group can get to work for those very same concerns that you had with the time constraints that we have, that we're facing.
So Mr. Chairman, just one comment. There was originally on the draft agenda, we had approving the charge and we had under appointments, the discussion of appointments for the committee. However, this board really has never done that. And it does present an awkward situation. Should people be here to either be interviewed or be for consideration for the committee, you don't approve the charge, there is no committee. Thank you for coming. So it's an awkward situation, which is why this was on this agenda. And then if the board approved it this evening, and I'm not forcing you to do one thing or the other, I'm just saying that normally you'll do the charge at one meeting and then the next meeting, you know, you'll do the appointments. Which is what we tried to do for Fayetteville, but again, some of the boards and committees didn't get back to us with their representatives yet.
Going back to that statement, then all the committees have seen this charge. So no one has an issue with the charge, right? The, oh.
No, this is, this is the board setting up, this is your charge.
We're looking for membership from other committees. Have they seen this charge? No one else has seen it?
You determine what, you determine what you're looking for and then you provide it to the committees and tell them this is what we're looking for, where you provide a member for this committee.
Oh, I understand that part, but I thought we were, since we discussed it publicly, what we were thinking we were going to do, I thought they would have seen a template of this draft. That's my question. It's fine.
Yeah, no, like I said, I mean, I...
I thought the direction from the last meeting was for Mr. Purple to put the draft charge together, to distribute it to us. We would comment, she would compile the document into a final form and we would have it on the agenda tonight.
I don't disagree with that. I just thought we would, since they're in-house committees that we're...
Normally, we provide, yeah, normally you do the charge and then once the charge is approved by the board, then it goes out to everybody.
But we need to have candidates by our next meeting.
If you approve the charge tonight, then that is the intention and we've already put the push on for the Fayetteville committee.
The committees are going to have to start, they're going to have to meet and vote on a rep.
Ms. Gillespie.
Thank you. Freddie Gillespie from the Open Space Preservation Commission. My comment was just there's an extra "and" in our commission's name as a typo unless that's been removed if you're voting this tonight. And I would just also ask if you can list who hasn't signed in yet because I don't have an issue with the charge or, I mean, I agree with how you're handling it, that it's not up to us to weigh in. It's the Selectmen's committee, so that wasn't my point. But I believe it says...
What do you mean, signed in for, you mean people who have not reported back to us yet?
Yep.
Who hasn't, yeah.
Golf Course Committee and Recreation.
That's it?
That's it.
Did you get anything from the Land Trust?
No, the Land Trust is not, is not an official member of the committee.
Not a member.
That was taken out.
Yeah, well, there's, like I said, that was something that, you know, obviously they can be, you know, included in the discussion and can be brought into the discussion. You know, the ex-official members were the Conservation Administrator, the Special Counsel for the Conservation Restriction and Town Council.
So Recreation and the Golf Course have not...
Of course. We do have one person who has submitted for the at-large rep, who is in a butter, who actually was on the Golf Course Master Plan Committee, which I think from this board's perspective probably would be it's in a butter and it's got that continuity from the last piece. So then simply Recreation and Golf Course Committee. I think that you've indicated that you would represent...
Well, our commission met and took a vote, so it was...
So now it's official.
Yeah, that's what I think, I believe I sent an email saying that the commission took a vote and I was under the understanding Conservation also took a vote.
Conservation did take, well, they had taken a vote previously, yes, so we've got a member.
I'm just saying, I'll certainly reach out to those other organizations. I'm just saying, I'll certainly reach out to those other organizations, not that it's my job, but I would like to get it done, but recreation and the golf course committee, never hurts to, to put a bug in their ear, but...
If the board approves this tonight, that's the first thing that happens, you know, tomorrow morning, is we make sure that they get us somebody.
And I would just say that it's a five-member committee, so if you have three who have agreed to be on it, the committee can start meeting as soon as you appoint them. It would be nice if it could start meeting sooner, but you have three, which is a quorum, is all I'm saying, tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I just have one edit to the charge.
Okay.
Under the committee shall prepare the draft, if we could change that to the committee shall provide input and work with town council and special council as they prepare the draft. I don't think that the committee will be preparing, my assumption is they won't be actually preparing the draft. They'll be providing the input and working with.
I'm good with that.
Okay. That was my only change to that.
So...
Do you have that?
No, I don't.
So can you provide that?
Oh, I can, I will.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to send that to me.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, hi, my name is Kate Burke. I live at 14 Birchwood Drive, and I'm interested in this topic about this committee. I just have a question for the board. Is there time sensitivity for the meeting of this committee to have the work done on the CR? Is time important?
Yes. So...
So...
Again, the time constraint that we have is the date that was in the warrant article for having the conservation restriction recorded. Recorded by date certain, which is July 1st, 2018.
So time is of essence.
Correct.
And the two questions before the selectmen this evening are to vote on the charge, and the option is that you can appoint three of your five committee members this evening, and three of the five committee members, according to the rules, can meet this evening? Or they can start meeting, is that possible?
I think potentially, it's, it's, it can be construed, and there have been violations filed in the past about open meeting law violations, simply because the board would be asked to vote on something that's not on the agenda.
So, and I think out of respect for the other two members of the committee, they ought to be in on all the meetings as well. So, you know, I don't think it's fair to, you know, to start down the road with, with preparing a conservation restriction, and then two weeks later, two other members show up, and it's like, oh, well, this has already been decided already. I think they ought to be involved from the start personally.
Yeah, agreed.
Right, no, no, I guess I understand that. Just, I was here last month when we were meeting, and I was under the impression that by this meeting, you would be voting on the five members of the committee to move this forward, only because time is of essence.
So again, my recollection was that we were going to work towards preparing the charge itself, that we would have the charge ready for tonight, and again, that's, we took a stab in preparing the draft as to the makeup and the membership of the committee, and it could very well have been that there could be further discussion about who that membership would be at the meeting tonight. So, so I think we're acting appropriately to approve the charge tonight, and at the next meeting to, to fill the appointments to the committee with the membership as we have agreed tonight.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Sue Bowles, 28 Lattice Square Road. Lisa, your change, I was going to suggest changing it to they'll prepare the draft in consultation with the council and whoever you said, because later on, a couple bullets down, it says the committee shall prepare and present its draft CR to the board of selectmen at a public meeting. If they're not preparing, if they're not preparing the draft, are, is the council going to present it to the board of selectmen?
Sorry. They're providing input and working with town council and special town council to come up with the conservation restriction, and I would imagine that, I'm just looking down, sorry, they could prevent it, present, yeah, I see your question. They could easily prepare and present it to the board of selectmen, but we could say the committee as well as special council.
Well, I was going to suggest that you leave the first one saying that it should, they shall prepare the draft conservation restriction in consultation or with the town council and the other person.
Special council, yeah.
Special council.
Yeah.
And then you don't need to change the rest of it.
Oh.
Because...
That works.
Actually, that does work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was easy, and you got that now, so I don't have to do anything. That's even better, thank you, Sue.
Yes, ma'am.
Sally Waters, 17 Wood Street. I just wanted to ask why the, I realize it's not a town entity, but why the land trust rep was dropped from being on the committee? In that the person that saw Southborough Open Land Foundation was going to put forward has a great deal of expertise in this subject.
Well, there, I, I think, and again, this is for the board's discussion, so I'll try and answer this, and then we'll see, you know, where you want to go, but I think that, you know, very simply, you know, adding another member to the committee, you know, makes it obviously an even number, which, you know, we usually try and avoid. The second thing is, is I'm sure there is other, there's, there's other parties that you could add to this, but at some point, you have to, you know, you have to limit it to what you think you need. Obviously, you know, you know, under the duties, the committee communicates with town departments, officials, and other resources as needed. The committee can bring in whoever they want and feels is valuable to the discussion. It doesn't necessarily need that they need to be voting, you know, on, on how this is going to work. Obviously, the trust is, is very valuable in terms of, you know, being a resource, but do they need to be a committee, be a voting member and sitting on the committee? I don't know that they do. That's up to this board to decide, but again, you know, I, I think it's, it's a resource that is going to be brought into the process, whether or not you actually put them on the committee or not.
I agree.
As do I.
As do I.
Okay. So I will move the charge as amended.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Public comment. Seeing none. We will not be going to executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.